Only three minutes late. I'd like to call to order the Redesville City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 12, 2023. And we call Reverend Ralph Clayton to do our invocation.
Thought I was going to get to speak a long time tonight, but I don't guess I will be able to. I do want to say a few words, though, if I might, particularly about the gentleman that's retiring and putting things aside. Almost approximately 60 years ago, a gentleman by the name of James Festerman was recognized as an early cop policeman. They gave him a job, of course, on the beat, marking cars and things along that line. And after many months of pitter-patter and walking the beat, he was able to ride with the big man, the big boss. And so they came down the street and all of a sudden, they noticed that a car was weaving a little bit. And as it was weaving, Festerman said, "I am ready to go and check my first car." The boss man said, "That's fine, you go ahead." And so he nervously got out of the car, walked up and asked the man for his license and that type of thing. And he said, "By the way," he said, "what's your name, sir, driving the car?" He said, "My name is John Jones." He said, "Okay." He said, "Now, what about the man on the other side and the passenger side?" He said, "His name is Ralph Jones." He said, "Well, what about the man in the middle?" He said, "Well, it's a long story." He said, "What do you mean it's a long story?" He said, "We picked him up earlier this evening in a pigpen and said, 'We had to put a hat on because we saw the red light on us and said, 'His name is Oink Jones.'" Festerman went back to the chief and said, "Chief, you know, I want to tell you something." He said, "I've lived a long time, and I'm not very old at this point." But he said, "There's one thing for sure. I've seen a lot of ugly men in my life, but that Oink Jones is the ugliest man I've ever seen in my life." Festerman, a very special night for you as well, and congratulations for your many years of service. And to those that are taking a new walk in your life, Willie Martin, and certainly a gentleman that I've known a long time through the influence of his granddad, Shannon Coates, congratulate you as well. Before I pray tonight, we especially want to have a moment of silence in memory of Judy Yarber. Would you pause with us and then I will pray? Father, we are thankful tonight that we are able to offer our gratitude and appreciation for those that have served. Thank you for our city council, our mayor, each one of those, and the different departments of our city. And we are blessed as a town, and we're so grateful to be a part of the city of Redesville. And we say that with deep appreciation. And for those that have gathered tonight, may this be a very special time as we venture into the future and as we look to leadership as it leads us. And may we always be thankful for those that have served, those who have led, and among those has been James Festerman. And may God's blessings and grace be upon him and upon his life and his family. And may God bless us in this meeting this evening in Christ's name. Amen.
May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The fourth thing on the agenda tonight is the approval of the November 14, 2023 regular meetings, I mean minutes. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, all of those in favor, raise your right hand.
Teresa votes yes.
Well, yes, I failed to say that Teresa Scoville is out of town on business, but she's here in spirit and on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next thing on the agenda is recognition of outgoing council members. Outgoing council member, Councilwoman Sherri Walker, if you would follow me up to the podium there. I'll slide out, please. I'm a junior.
Okay. I was trying to follow the rules and follow you.
Sherri, this is bittersweet. Can I get a hug for her? Certificate of recognition. Where Sherri G. Walker was first elected to Redesville City Council in 2011 to fill one of the District B seats on Redesville City Council, a position she held until December of 2023. And whereas Councilwoman Walker has been a strong advocate of the city and its residents, working to provide much-needed services to her constituents, whether it be the installation of defibrillators at Redesville facilities, covered benches for those citizens riding the scat buses. And whereas Councilwoman Walker, Walker's compassion for Redesville and its residents was important as the city council had to make some difficult decisions during the difficult time of the pandemic while still making progressive strides, hiring one, not just one, but two city managers during her tenure. Whereas Councilwoman Walker will always be remembered as the friendly face that greeted citizens attending various events and supported by the city employees. She treasured as well, especially at city-sponsored blood drives where she was always there asking to roll your sleeve up. Always there with a smile and a welcoming word. Now therefore be it resolved that the Redesville City Council does extend to Sherri G. Walker its heartfelt thanks for 12 years of service to the governing board and to the residents of Redesville, and wishes her only the best in the future. This the 12th day of December, 2023. Donald L. Gorham, Mayor of the City of Redesville. Can I get another hug?
Can everybody hear me? I don't follow the rules. Those of you who know me know I don't follow the rules. I don't want to get behind a microphone. I retired from high school. I'm used to talking over 1,200 students, so, you know, you're just not that big. But let me tell you, this is something I never had planned to do, but I had a group that came to me and said, "You need to do this." And I'm like, "You've got to be kidding me. This is not what I am about." I can honestly say I got some very good advice from a dear friend, Mike Felter, who I taught school with. His dad had been in the legislature all of his life, and he said, "Don't ever promise anybody anything because you don't have to do any worse." Greatest advice I could ever have. I've never promised anybody anything, but I have worked tirelessly trying to make Redesville a better place. There's little things all over this city where, like the sign at the fire department that says "safe place" that you can go to 24 hours a day because at times there's no one at the police department, and I want our citizens to feel safe. But as you talked about, the shelters for the bus, get on that bus, ride that scat bus, and you'll find out a lot of things that are happening in Redesville. In my tenure have we had heartaches, we've had joy, we've had loss, we have had ups and downs. I have worked for three different mayors and am blessed that all three are here tonight. We have Mayor Gorham, we have Mayor Donnaker, and we have Chief, which to me, he's chief, but he was still mayor too. So three different mayors, also three different city managers. And I think the third time we've had it right with some wood. So very happy about that. One of the biggest changes or obstacles that we had to do was to fight and deal with COVID. None of us knew what was happening. I mean, it was like, it hit us and we did not know. That was a hard thing to overcome, but we did it. And boy, did we come back strong, especially with the American Rescue Funds that we have. And you look around the city and tell what we did with that. I can't start naming names because we would be here all night. And I know Dave's got some good refreshments over there, and we've got two candidates that are ready to be sworn in, so I will cut this short. Talking about the changes that we've made, there's been two constas in my life, and they're sitting right over there at that table. And they make me look good because one keeps me law and order straight, and the other one helps me conjugate my verbs properly, which I don't do a lot. I talk through southern English, but they have been with me through the last 12 years, and it's something, it's something. In fact, I've been, Angela, would you like to share with everyone here the name that you call me?
Trouble.
She fits where. But anyway, this has transformed me. I know when I first got elected, I was with my minister at lunch, and he was so afraid this was going to change me. And I'm like, "You're exactly right. I hope it changed me for the better." And guess what? It did because, come, I come from a long line, and my mom said, "Never get above your raises." And I never will and never have. So thank you, the citizens of Redesville, for the opportunity that you have bestowed upon me, and I appreciate it. And I will see you on the street or somewhere else, or usually at the grocery store. So thank you so much.
And this is from the Sesquicentennial Committee?
No, that's actually from the city. We have something else for you.
Oh, okay, from the city.
Do I open it now?
Yes.
It's heavy. See, you always need that helping hand. Oh, man! Look at that. And I'm assuming this is from Brad Pitt's shirt?
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely awesome. And a pass that we've been talking about for years, print fingering on the back. So wonderful. Thank you.
You are more than welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, Angela has one more. Chief, would you go up with the...
I'll pull this off for a moment.
We've got something for both of you that just came in today. First two to get from the, well, it's from the city, but it's from the Sesquicentennial Committee especially.
Oh, okay.
And it's our Sesquicentennial Redesville Opale game. So we have one for both of you, and yes, council, you will get one too. And something else that we've been hiding all around town for our Sesquicentennial events is a medallion.
Oh, wonderful!
And so we're encouraging our council members to come to the December 22 unveiling our actual burial of the time you have sold, if they'd like to get something special. So anyway, go ahead, got the first one.
Thank you.
Councilman Harrison? I thought it only right that as the chief leaves, that one of his former officers read his proclamation on tonight.
And a terrific friend.
Yeah.
You know, I want to say tonight, what an honor for me, Chief. This is one of the greatest honors that it could ever be restored upon me because tonight we have the judges here, we have the sheriff here, we have chiefs here, we have commissioners here, and we have council people here. And all these people, I am the least of all the people, but I am so thankful to be able to give this recognition to you tonight, a certificate of recognition, because first of all, I want to say that you mean so much to me. I am actually enjoying life. I've got 30 years of experience from the city, and I got a check comes to me every Little fella that grew up on North Scale Street. And I tell you, because of you, you know, you've made my life really a really pleasured. And I just thank you for the time that you met me at the YMCA. And you know, you invited me to be an officer. Thank you so much. And thank you for setting the wonderful example that you have set over the years and what it means to be a loyal, good police officer that cares about people and your officers. And I saw that and I worked with you, that you cared for your officers, you cared for your city. And I mean that from my heart. Now, one thing I would like for us to do now that you've got time, we're going to get together, we're going to go to Y, we're going to do some bench pressing, we're going to do some curls and some squats and all of that. We're going to have a good time. But I'd like to read this tonight, and it says, "Chief, a certificate of recognition. Whereas James K. Festerman has committed some 60 years of service to the city of Redesville, being reelected in 2015 to serve a second stint on the Redesville City Council, this time as an eight-year representative of District B. And whereas, during his most recent tenure, Councilman Festerman provided senior leadership as the council led its residents through the difficult time of the pandemic while still making progressive strides within the city by upgrading infrastructure, adding a new tenants to the Redesville Industrial Park and hiring a new city manager. And whereas, Councilman Festerman and the council have been able to oversee many quality of life projects for the city aided by American Rescue Funds such as the Downtown Streetscape Project and All-Inclusive Park. Whereas, Councilman Festerman, who will forever be known as Chief, always made decisions based on what was best for our citizens and the city employees, exactly as I said. Now therefore be it resolved that the Redesville City Council does extend to Councilman James Clinton Festerman its heartfelt thanks for his last eight years on this board and extends to him best wishes as he spends more time with his family and friends. This the 12th day of December, 2023, signed by Honorable Donald L. Gorham, Mayor." And I also want to say to you, Chief, also, I got to give you a thanks too for helping my son, you know, and get there in the feds. So I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
I have one regret. I wish I had had an opportunity to talk to Ralph so we could have gotten Oink Jones here tonight.
I'm going to get some good in my house and cook.
Said that we made a little mess up here.
I made the mess. Did all of them.
That's all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Have a sweet one. I'm dealing with a cold and I apologize. If you saw me come up here with this notebook, don't get too nervous, you're not going to be here all night.
First of all, I want to thank my God for giving me the strength to be here all these many years. It's been 60-plus years, and without his help and leadership and love, I didn't always follow him, but he always followed me. But recently, I've had the opportunity to attend church with Reverend Clayton. I sit just in front of Clayton, and he sits to my back. So he's got my back, Lord's in front of me, so I take it pretty good shit. Thank you, Reverend Clayton. I want to first start by thanking my family for the many, many years of love and support that they gave me while I endured through the police department and later into the city council. I was fortunate to have a loving wife for 50 years who supported me in almost everything I did, and her love was enduring and very thoughtful, and she was there when I needed it forever. I will always have her in my heart. May her soul rest in peace. For the last eight years, I've been fortunate enough to have another person in my life who's really stepped up to be the love of my life and does a fabulous job of supporting me now, Vicky Austin, who most of you know. Vicky, I'm so proud of you. Last evening, Vicky was honored to become the chairman of the Rockingham County School Boys, and I know she'll do a great job. Vicky, we applaud you for that. Will you give Vicky a round of applause? There's so many people in this room, and if I started naming folks, I'd be in trouble and I'd leave out some folks, but a lot of you've influenced my life in so many, many ways. Couple of really nice things have happened to me over the last couple of weeks. I've received phone calls from several people around the state acknowledging my contribution to the city and having things to say. But two weeks ago, I think it was, I was honored by the Rockingham County Commissioners as to be acknowledged by them, and that was very, I appreciate a couple of Commissions here tonight I seen, I appreciate that. The plaque you gave me will find a very prominent place in my home, and it will always be remembered as my founders. Also, in the room tonight, we have, I refer to him as a former colleague, Reese Pearl. Reese was kind enough to secure a flag that was flown over to the North Carolina State House back in July. Reese presented that to me. Obviously, that will have a special place in my house. But all of you will have a special place in my heart because you've suffered with me, you watched me stumble, and you picked me up, and together, I think we made some good contributions. Reese, thank you for that honor. You know, one of the things I would say to you tonight, too, some of the folks that know me well will find it very strange. I want to actually compliment the city managers. I was always known to be very critical of the city managers. Didn't always have the greatest relationship with them, but I always knew their heart was in the right place. And each time we got a new city manager, I would tell them, I said, "I hope you'd be better than that last guy." And I think we finally achieved it this time, but guys, you know, and I'm looking out here tonight, and I know I'm going down a bad path, but Kelly Armey became one of my greatest friends over the years. We didn't always agree while we worked together, but later on, we both took a deep breath and found out we liked each other, I think. So Kelly, Frances, we love y'all. To my former colleague on the board, Councilman Walker, where you at?
I'm right here.
Okay. Sherri, it was a real pleasure to serve with you. You brought a lot of humor and good smarts to the council. You will be remembered as a leader, so please, you have nothing to look back on but fondness because we, Sherri and I didn't always agree, but we never became disagreeable, so I very appreciate for that. So we love you and best of luck to you in the future. To my new council members, one of them is my neighbor, so if I got to complain, I don't have far to go to. Shannon Coates, Shannon will be recognized here in a few minutes. Shannon, I watched him grow up. He's just, he became a fine police officer, a fine man, and he will make an outstanding contribution to our city council. I've known his granddad, his dad, and his mother, so he will do well, and we will be well-served because of his love for the city. Shannon has a deep, abiding love for the city, and he will deliver, so I applaud your parents for raising a fine young man. Councilman Martin, Councilman Lek Martin, excuse me. I did not know Councilman Martin for a very long time, but the brief times I have known him, I found him to be a very hard worker, one who is very sincere in his thoughts and very dedicated to his position. He will work hard, and I know that together with our leadership, joining this outstanding group of people we have up here, the city's best years are ahead of us. We will be fine. Don't not worry about the city. The city's going to be great. We have super, super leadership, and these two gentlemen will make an excellent addition to our city council. Good luck to both of you guys. Both of you have beautiful wives, too. And I met your grandmother, too. Beautiful lady. You know, I guess it's about time for me to go, I guess. I guess somebody's already said it's time for you to go, Chief, but I was a little bit disappointed in Angela. Angela never disappoints me, but all my life, my favorite song has been Happy Trails. Happy Trails. And I thought she would have had that played tonight because it is Happy Trails until we meet again, but we'll meet again, I'm sure. But it's, you know, one of the things I've been accused of, and I wear it proudly, is being a cheerleader for Redesville. I think I got that mantle when Mayor Felton chose to not run again and no longer in the council. She was, and to her death, she was a true believer in Redesville and a real outgoing person for Redesville, so we really dearly miss her. Also tonight, I'd be remiss if I didn't see Councilman Mayor Donnaker. I saw Mayor Donnaker in the room earlier. Jay, thank you for your, Jay was one of my, well, we mentored each other, didn't we? We came in this business at the same time, so Jay and I had a great relationship. We served on the council together in different roles for 16 years, I think. So Jay, Dan, thank y'all, and thank you for your love and support. Now, I guess it's time for me to go, but please know that I will always have all of you close in my heart. I will always support you. The city's best years were the new leadership, the city's best years are ahead of us. We have nothing to be ashamed of. And you know, I just can't tell you how much you folks have meant to me. I could be up here all day, and somebody's already told me to sit down, but I could be up here all day. Thank you, folks, for the support they've got. May God bless you until we meet again. Happy trails.
Mayor Gormeier, we begin to adjourn to the board. We'll wait to tell the comments.
Wait for the comments.
Three minutes. Next on the agenda is oath of office. Administering the oath of the newly elected council members. First one on the ticket is Councilman-elect Coats. He's gonna be sworn in by Judge Freeman.
State name?
Shannon Chris.
You, Shannon Coats, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties in your office as Reevesville City Council member, so help you God.
Kinda hard to follow a chief there, but let me, let me start off by saying, you know, I gotta thank the good Lord above of giving me a good career, a safe career with the city of Reevesville. Law enforcement is a tough job, and I thank truly by working and having a career like that with your city and staying with your city the whole entire time that you retired. You learn things. You learn the people. You know the people. You know the city. And one of those, as I sat down and was contemplating and running and getting into this, people were saying I was crazy, just retired, you know, have a good time, whatever, but I got to thinking about it and, you know, talking with my family and friends about it and then thinking about my career and learning the city and knowing the people and getting to know the people. I got to saying to myself, you know, it's kinda important if I step up in this role and things work out and I do get elected, it's important that a candidate or a councilman or councilwoman knows the people and knows the city, and not only just that, the people need to know who they are. And so I take this job serious. I'm a worker. I'm all in it. Some people tell me to slow down, and I'm gonna go get it. I know government doesn't work as fast as your private life and, you know, private business and stuff, but I have to say that this was a truly eye-opening experience, getting into politics. You learn a lot, you learn a whole lot of stuff in politics, and you learn a lot of people and how some of those give you advice and really you learn. But I couldn't do this without my family and the friends that helped give advice and the work that they done. I mean, I can't thank them enough. It's a lot of work when you run a campaign and you're trying to get elected, but I can tell you that I will give one hundred and ten percent of what I do when I sit up there and we make decisions. I know, and everybody in here knows, it's not the easiest job sitting up here. It's not the easiest thing to make a decision when these votes come up for certain things on the agenda. It's gonna be tough. You're not gonna please everybody, but I will do my best in the position that I hold for the months and the years that I stay and continue to do this, but I truly am thankful for everybody that's showing up. There's a lot of folks here, and that's going back to my career in getting to know and learn people and in meeting new people, make friends all across this county, all across this state. And there's a whole lot of people in here now that are in positions in their cities that serve just like I did, so they took that leap as well to go into that because I'm sure they feel strong in the city that they live and grew up in and worked in to do the same thing that I'm doing. But for me to get on a team, and there's no I am team, so we know that, so to get on a team to where I know we can make Reevesville better, all I can say is, as I said during my campaign, the sleeves are getting rolled up because it's time to go to work, and that's just me. So I'm ready to get on board with all, everybody up here on the council. I'm ready to make Reevesville better and thrive. That's all it's about. We live here, and we gotta make it better, and that's what we want as a city. So I truly appreciate everybody coming out for the support and the, and the work that they did for me during this time, and I'm truly looking forward to it. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Dejournay will be sworn in by Judge Wilkins.
Do you want to use this panel? Think about it. Do you, Barbara Dejournay, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and will you faithfully discharge your duties in your office as a Reevesville City Council member, so help you God? Thank you. Go sign right here, please. This is your opportunity.
Good afternoon. I'd just like to say, give honor to God and thank everyone who supported me, and I promise you that I will continue to do the work that I've done over the years, and I'll give you even more. And a special thank you to my husband, who's really been supportive no matter what I've been through. And it was, I think this position was chosen by God because I had said in my heart that if I didn't get reelected, it would, it would be because he had something else planned for me, but he chose this. So I will give you everything, and I will honor God always, and thank you, everyone, including Mr. Marshall and everyone else who supported me through my campaign. Thank you.
Don't sit down, Councilman Hurston. Councilman Hurston will also be sworn in by Judge Wilkins.
Reverend, it's hard to keep him calling you captain, but we're trying. You raise your right hand, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you, William Harrison, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States?
I do.
And will you support the Constitution and the laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith?
I will.
And will you faithfully discharge your duties in your office as a Reevesville City Council member, so help you God?
I will.
Will you sign this, please?
Thank you.
This is your opportunity.
I'll be very brief. First of all, I have to give all honor to God. I thank him, and then I just want to thank each and every one of you for your support and just putting confidence in me, and I'm gonna do my best not to ever let you down and to give my very best. And then I want to end by saying, I'm fired up and ready to go.
And last but not least, Councilman-elect Martin, he'll be sworn in by Abner Bullins, clerk of court.
Please state your name.
William Donald Martin.
Do you, William Martin, do solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties of your office as the Reevesville City Council member?
Admit it.
Congratulations.
Well, those of you know me, I can talk a lot in private, but not amongst a big crowd. But I would like to thank everybody for coming out. Thank my family, my wife, and my friends, and the people who came out here tonight to support me. Like, thank my friend Abner for showing up to swear me in, the sheriff who gave me a job almost eighteen years ago, and still have a position with him today, and he showed up, but I like to thank everybody, and I'm looking forward to working for the city and trying to work hard to make things better. Thank you.
The seventh item on the agenda is 2023-2025 council organization as required by GS 168-68, Appointment of Council Liaisons. I like to have an opportunity to speak to everyone prior to making assignments, so what I'm gonna do is make those assignments at the January meeting. Next thing on the agenda will be public comments. Is there anyone who'd like? Come on up, Kelly. Give your, give your name and address, please.
Kelly Dennis Kelly Allman, 2111 Belmont Drive in Reevesville, North Carolina, 2732. Mayor Gormeier, if you please, if it pleases you, I'd like to ask some indulgence from the council and give me a little bit more than three minutes. I didn't take three minutes at the last council meeting, and as former city manager, I hope you'll give me just a little bit of extra time because I got a lot of dirt to spread. No, I don't really. I want to congratulate newly council, newly elected council members, and I know you'll do well for the council, for the city, and congratulations to everyone. I was called on at the last council meeting to say a few words about my friend James Festerman, and I was completely unprepared and heavily medicated, so I didn't get to say very much. So I want to take more of my time tonight. When I was being... Do what? Hey, hey, you're off the council. You don't have any authority anymore. And by the way, Sherry, Council, former Councilwoman Walker, I'm glad we finally got the city manager job right.
Mr. Allman, I never had the pleasure or displeasure of working for the city. You were gone before I was elected, so what can I say?
I never had that pleasure or displeasure either. I'm one. When I was being considered for the job in Reevesville, the very first Reeves Villian I met and had contact with was James Festerman. I learned that when the city manager, the previous city manager left, the council expressed their confidence in Chief Festerman by appointing him as acting city manager. I was very impressed by that. I found out later that actually, they had appointed he and Bernice Phillips, the finance director, as co-acting chair, city managers. That made a lot more sense to me that they had the finance director not... That explained a lot to me. But he was very helpful in helping me get settled, get ready for my interview with the council, and he's been a friend ever since then. We talked about watching each other. We talked about watching each other out in my, the city manager's office, you know, the window faces the police department, and James used to laugh because he said, "I'll stand out on my window." He stood at his window and watched every afternoon to wait to see when I left so he could leave. The truth was, I was looking out my window watching you to see when you were gonna leave, too. It worked both ways. We were friends and coworkers for nine years, I believe it was, and James decided to retire against my wishes and a whole lot of other wishes, but he decided to retire and turn to other things, so we had a nice retirement party for him. We went on, and I was lucky enough to have James elected to the city council later on, and served a lot of years and worked a lot of years together there, and I think we accomplished a lot. We messed up a couple of things, too, but I think we accomplished a lot on the council when you were on there. But James decided to move on to other things later on in his life and decided not to run for council again, so we had a nice similar event like this. We had another retirement party for him. Luckily for Reevesville and everyone else involved, I think he decided to change his mind a couple of years later and ran again, and we were blessed to have his service for eight more years. So now we're here again for another retirement party for James. I just want to know, how many retirement parties does a person give? Is this it? Is this it? I don't have to come to another retirement party for James Festerman? All right. You all know me, you know, I'll get, I'll get all clouded up if I talk too much about James. He's been such a good friend to me and my family for thirty-six years now. We've been in Reevesville thirty-six years, and he's been such a good friend. We've traveled the country and parts of the world together, all in the service of the So many things I can talk about. Stuck one night at a rest stop in Richmond, Virginia, in a broke-down, rent-a- wreck van. Van broke down, and somehow or another, James and Mayor Pro Tem Harry Brown got some friends there at the rest stop to crank us up and get us started and got us back to Reevesville that night. I understand the payoff for that was a pint of liquor. I want to know where the pint of liquor came from. I think I know. So many stories like that. Rafting down the New River, having a good time. I can go on and on, I want to tell stories, but I won't. But I want, I want you all to know that we have been blessed to have the service of this man for as long as he has served this city. People of James' ability and intelligence could have done a lot of things in life and could have done a lot of other things and could have used his time to benefit other things, but he chose to serve his home city, and that says a lot about him. He retired and was comfortable and could have done other things, but he chose to come back and help the city, and you can look around the city and see the difference this man has made. I heard someone say one time that you can judge him, a man's character could be judged by the things he does when no one else is looking, and this is really true about James. People just don't realize and don't understand the things that he's done for this city of his time and out of his pocket. I know so many examples of people in need that James helped. I've been one of those people. You just don't realize how much this man has done for this city and for all of you personally. We've been very blessed to have this, this man, this man's service. James, we've said it each other in jest a lot of times, but I'll say it, I want to say it out loud to everybody here, I love you like a brother.
Three minutes, Chief.
I'll be very brief, but I was, you know, you always, when you mention folks, you fail to recognize somebody, and someone here is tonight is special to me, and I failed to recognize him. Tyler King. Tyler, would you stand up, please? Come on, I'd be glad if you'd come up, Tyler, if you would. Tyler and I developed a relationship. I think the first time I ever ran for office, come on, Tyler. Tyler's a dear friend of mine. Every time I ran, he put out signs, he always was at the pole asking people to vote for me. Tyler, I'm sorry I didn't recognize you early, but I'm glad to see you here tonight. Tyler's a special guy. If you ever get a chance to meet Tyler, take that opportunity. You'll enjoy it. Thank you, Tyler.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for council tonight? Ladies and gentlemen, this has been a very, very special night tonight. It's a rarity that you have someone to work for one place for sixty-plus years, and it's a lovely night because we have new council members who are gonna serve you to the very best of their abilities, and they are truly gonna make Reevesville... And they are truly gonna make Regisville, we are all gonna make Regisville, a better place. I'm gonna make an executive order before we leave. Everyone who's here tonight, I order you to go down to the gym and get something to eat before you leave. I'll be at the door with my belt off, taking care of anyone who fails to do so. Truly, we have a lot of food prepared, and we don't want to take any food home, so please, 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 stop by the gym tonight before you leave. Congratulations to our new council members, Coats and Martin. We're gonna work the skin off your hands. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Someone?
Second.
We got a motion and a second and a discussion. During none, those in favor, raise your right hand. You got the first vote right. Let's all go down and get something to eat.